All right. I thought we had everybody.
I was always at the midpoint.
Where'd they hide at this time? I'd like to call to order the February 9th, 2011 regular meeting of the Parkway Board of Education. If everyone would please rise and join the board in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, Mrs. Calanda.
Mr. Applebaum, Mrs. DeSteele, Mrs. Feldman.
Here.
Mr. Jacob.
Here.
Mrs. Logerman.
Here.
Dr. Sirtino.
Here.
Mr. Major.
Here. Special recognitions this evening. I'd like to call on Sandy Collins. And the Board of Education is pleased to recognize an exceptional group of Parkway students this evening who earned All-State Music Honors during the All-State Festival Concert at the Missouri Music Educators Association Conference in late January. Sandy, you have the floor.
Good evening. Good evening, President Major, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Cinty, Mrs. Calanda, and ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out this evening. It is with great pleasure and my honor to introduce and congratulate the students who have represented Parkway in the All-State Ensembles this year at the Missouri Music Educators Conference. They were selected through a rigorous layers upon layers of auditions. And, you know, when I was thinking about what would describe this group of students, I can say this: These are Parkway's mission kids. They are. Because, you know, they've been curious all along. They wanted to know how to get better, and they practiced. They wanted, "How can I be the best?", and they worked at it. So they questioned, they revised, they rehearsed, and pretty soon, they became quite capable, enough to take them to the top. And when you see them perform, and when I heard them in their groups, they exuded confidence. That's why I say this group of kids are Parkway's mission kids. They're capable, and they've been curious, and they are confident, and getting better. So I'm extremely proud of them. It's not easy to make state. There's, it's a huge competition across the state, and we had, actually, this year, quite a few that represented. We had, I believe, 27 in total that, that actually were recognized in either selected for groups, or honorable mention, or first runner-up, and so forth. That's still pretty high. So we'll recognize all. And at this time, I'm going to call Central High Principal, Tin Gannon, and if there is a representative teacher from Central High, I believe that might be Doug Hoover. We have some spots in our lineup tonight, because we have musicals going on in two schools, and say no more. So we have other rehearsals and things that they're, they're involved in. Come on down, Doug. And Doug's going to help me with the certificates. And as I call your name, please come down, and we'll see who's here this evening. I think Jonathan Dinman, and he is here. He had, he had, he's not here. Also, Adam McDonald. And Adam McDonald's violin, and comes from Winifred Crox Orchestra. Okay? We'll keep going. And Daniel McDonald, violin. Central Orchestra. Maybe you want to stand up yourself? I don't know. Charles Ken, violin. Congratulations to Charles. Matthew Sprague. Matthew, violinist. Congratulations to Matthew. Sean Burnin, viola. Maggie Madsen, cellist. Ben Parkcello. Melinda Lai. Melinda, and cello player. Here she comes. Doug Tang, alternate first violin. It's Doug with us this evening. And Christopher Wang, who played in the orchestra, but he's an oboe player, so he represents both band and orchestra. Don't know if Christopher is here this evening. But this represents, then, our wonderful group of kids from Central High School. Would Dr. Markort please come down? And I believe we have a couple of teachers that are holding the fort for North High. Emily Matthews and Brian Reeves, choir directors.
Congratulations, Doug.
We have to take time for photo ops, sorry. Okay, and North, over this way. And Brian, I'll give you the certificates. Thank you. Okay? Maybe down the other way. We had some choir members that represented North High School. And Jess Cohn, soprano. And Maddie Rouse, soprano, from North High. Kaitlin Mace, and soprano, from North High. Jake Stone, bass, singing bass. All right. TJ Burke, second alternate tenor. And Devin Hughes, percussion honorable mention. We're very pleased to have Devin with us, and that would be All-State Band. So come on down, Devin. And this represents our North High kids that were selected for state this year. And so maybe we can find an alternate route. Looks like the paparazzi is busy over here. It's worth it, isn't it? Okay, let's call down Gary Mizola from South High, please. And Gary's with us tonight. And also, Ed Simon, orchestra director, will be handing out certificates. Come on down and join us. Okay, here we go. From our choir, Dan Myers, bass, and Dan is not able to be with us. Think he's involved in the musical. And Rachel Fuller was an alto alternate. Rachel, are you here with us? Catherine Bradley, bass player, extraordinaire. I might let you know Catherine was involved last year with the National ASTA, American String Directors Orchestra. And so she was a national representative last year. And we have Michael Zao, from, a cello player, from South. Now, while I have South up here, let me just say one extra thing, if I could, please. We like to say congratulations to our students, and a lot of our students from South are not here, but let me tell you, this was an extraordinary year for South High. In the Ed Simon over here, this young man standing on the edge. Yeah. Ed Simon's orchestra, symphonic orchestra, was selected to play along with Marilyn Houston. They performed, and Gary had double duty, because then he had to turn around and announce Jonathan Owens' chamber, advanced chamber choir. So those groups were selected as special guest of the state conference, and that is done through auditioning, and it was awesome. You know, I see a lot of concerts, and I hear, and I told Ed this, and this is truth, and I'm going to put a little story in here. I started weeping at piece three, and never stopped crying till the end of the concert. I was so overwhelmed. It was the most beautiful thing, I tell you. And I might say, if you go down to the St. Louis Symphony, we've got a
Bass.
A former bass, a former South bass student, who performs with the St. Louis Symphony. This is where it can take you. Keep practicing. Thanks, South. Okay. Congratulations to that, all of our students. And West High, please. And Dr. Jeremy Mitchell, I know is here with us. And also Eric Anthony is here representing the teaching staff. And Eric, come on down.
Yes.
Here you go. We're so proud of everybody. All right, so let's see if we've got some West students with us. Our choir sent three this year. Very nice job. Emily Barbour. Did I say her name right? Soprano. Come on down, Emily. Henry Hubbard, tenor. Henry's here. Good, Henry, come on down. And Adam Shepherd, tenor. We had three from our orchestra from West High. Bobby Song, violin. He's in a ring. Michael Su, violin. No, maybe not. How about Joy? Is Joy Tao here? Well, those are the three. But anyway, six from West this year. We're very proud of our West students, and let's hear it for their success and accomplishments. Parents, thanks for your support all along the way. Your students wouldn't be accomplishing at this high rate if it weren't for you, your support, and all those private lessons, and taking kids to rehearsals and practice, and they start when they're little. But look what you've accomplished. And students, congratulations again. Keep up that good work. Yes?
Do you acknowledge the other board member and the conference?
I'm sorry? That was kind of a big one, too. Dr. Cinty, could you please come forward? Thank you for the very important reminder. Please, let's congratulate Dr. Cinty, who was named Administrator of the Year at the Conference for Fine Arts of the whole state. There's only one of those. So can we say, "Congratulations"?
And that includes the recognition for our honor students. We're very proud of what we did.
Thank you. I can get a note in here about that before. Try to get, just get somebody.
Well, thank you all very much for coming, and while I'm sure you'd be intrigued to find out what happens in the rest of the meeting, we're going to take a short break here, and you're more than welcome to make your escape, so. Thanks again. Are we back? Yes, we're back. 4.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. Dr. Cinty, I understand we have another personnel matter, which will be added to item 10.02, and then we have a new agenda item, 10.19, which will be approval of the Parkway Registered Nurses Association contract. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the agenda will be corrected in that regard. And moving on to 5.0 citizen statements. And on one line, I have two names, so do I presume this is a joint statement? Okay. Could I call on TJ Burke and Jody Guller? And if you would state at least one address that we can send a written reply to.
Hi, I'm Jody Guller, student body president at Parkway North.
And I'm TJ Burke, the senior class president.
And we just want to say thanks to the Board of Education members for all that you do for us.
We were going to mail these letters during Board of Education Week. However, we thought we'd add a more personal touch, and seeing as how you didn't have a meeting that week, it was kind of inconvenient. So we decided to wait until today. So it's not, we didn't forget about you. It was intentional. So at this time, we'd like to give you your letters.
Okay, and if you'll confirm an address of 13230 Windy Gate Lane? Okay.
Mr. President, I will say that I did drive past North High during Board Appreciation Week, and all over the marquee was a big thank you to us, so. They were thinking of us. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ.
And Mr. President, I'd like to say that normally we limit these to three minutes, but since it's appreciation, they can go on all night.
I think we can make a procedural exception there. Well, Jody and TJ, thank you very much, and you will receive a reply in writing. 6.0 calls for a closed session. We have none this evening. 7.0 approval of the agenda for February 9, 2011, as previously amended. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. 8.0 resolutions. President's Day, February 15. Is that right?
No, it's the 21st.
February 21st. I stand corrected. May I have a motion and a second to approve the, our resolution regarding President's Day of February 21st, 2011?
So moved. Second?
I'll leave that to Mrs. Calanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. 9.0 communications. First, I'd like to recognize, I believe we have some education students in the audience. Is that, am I correct there? And where are you going to school?
I have a merit badge.
Excellent. Well, glad you could make it here this evening, and we'll try to keep it relatively short for you. We do occasionally have meetings past midnight. Does that daunt you at all? Ah, naivete. And then I believe we have two Boy Scouts from Troop 631 in Baldwin. Is that correct? Welcome. Great to have you here, and I trust there's a merit badge in it for you. All right, and 9.01. It is with great pleasure that I announced the selection of our new superintendent. If you haven't seen the website, read a newspaper, or listened to the radio in the last few weeks, then maybe this will be news to you. Dr. Keith Marty, from Menominee Falls, Wisconsin. He's been the superintendent there for 10 years, and was the assistant superintendent for nine years before that. Has finally dislodged himself, and he will be coming to Parkway. He will start July 1st, but he will be in town four times between now and July 1st. March 15th through 18th, which will include a Project Parkway Steering Committee, and he will participate in that session. Is that another one or two day-er that y'all?
That's one day.
One day, but all day. And then he'll be meeting other people in the district and getting out and about. And then April 12th through 15th, which will include our organizational and regular board meeting, he will be in town. And then May 2nd, he'll come in for the Pillar of Parkway recognition, so certainly looking forward to that. And then May 31st through June 4th, for the, our administrator meetings, and then the annual board retreat. So certainly wonderful that he's going to have that much time to spend with us, and probably some indication that he has, like any good leader, trained his replacement up in Menominee Falls, and can get away for that much time. So anyway, I'm eager for all of you to get to meet him, and I certainly want to thank the board, and all of the community members, staff members who participated in the interview process. There were some long days, and hard work went into that. And I thank you all, and I am immensely confident that we've found the right transformational leader for Parkway going forward. So, thank you all very much. 9.02, introduction of the Board of Education candidates. We have an election coming up April 5th.
I think that's the date.
April 5th. So in the order they registered as candidates, Dean Ogerman. You really had to be there at 4:30 in the morning, Dean.
I was, and it was cold.
And Bruce Major didn't get there till 6:00. And Chris Jacob. And Chris Jacob?
8:30.
And then Patricia Adair. Are you here this evening? Okay, so those are your four candidates for the April 5 election.
Mr. President, April 5 is my wife's birthday. Just thought I'd throw that out there.
Is that campaigning?
I don't know.
Hmm. Can we get a ruling on that, Mrs. Calanda? 9.02. I thought I was already, 3A, 2A. Calendar of meetings. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, March 2, 2011, at Central Middle School, starting at 7:30 PM. And 9.03 and a half or four liaison reports. Dr. Sortino?
Thank you, Dean.
Mrs. Mogulman?
Well, first, this is a comment. I've never heard of an interim superintendent being given a recognition of Superintendent of the Year. I thought that was pretty great.
When you're good, you're good.
Yeah, congratulations.
Probably ran out of as a superintendent.
Oh, I don't think so. I don't think so. I did want to mention, I serve on the cooperating school districts board, and on Monday night we interviewed the finalists for the position of Executive Director. And while it's not been announced yet, and I'm not at liberty to announce it, I will say that one has been selected, and in the near future, the announcement will be made. So you can look forward to that.
So you were doing two searches?
I'm really good at that.
I feel your pain. Mrs. Felden?
Last night, I wish I could have said this when the students, when the music students were still here, but I attended the Masterworks, Central High Masterworks concert last night with Sandy, whoever Sandy is. Anyway, it was a beautiful concert, and I recommend that any of you that have the time, each year should come out for that because it's a really well-done choir and orchestra concert.
Thank you. Mr. Jacob?
First, I just would like to, Bruce didn't recognize himself in this great effort of guiding us towards getting the new superintendent, and I think we're all satisfied that he's going to be that leader we need. So I thank him, and also Dr. Senti, who was a very leveling influence for us. I had a great experience a few nights ago to go to the all-district elementary vocal. I don't know how many kids were there, but it was just a wonderful group of kids. I always complain that the only thing I don't like about it is not long enough, but I don't know how long we could have those kids stand up there. It was this year, it was done at DePurser Auditorium at Logan Chiropractic College. Great event and a great auditorium where they could really feel like they're having a professional experience, and they were wonderful. They brought in a couple of, well, a guest conductor, and then they had a violinist and also a flautist who participated. It made it a really special event, and so I congratulate our fine arts people again on another extremely good event for both family and for the students. Thank you.
Dr. Sortino?
While we had the opportunity as a board to meet and visit with the candidates, someone behind the scenes is always there to help us to coordinate all the efforts, the meetings, the dinners, whatever it may be. And Carol Calanda, you did a wonderful job. We thank you very, very much.
All while battling pneumonia and, absolutely second that thought, Carol. Thank you, ma'am. I had the privilege of touring the Mosaics Academy over at Piermont, and that's an intimidating little trip, meeting the, what, first through fifth graders who are the, it's a bright crowd. And I think it was the third grade classroom where they were manufacturing materials to construct a geodesic dome, and they certainly planned on it being big enough to get inside. Out of newspapers, and I forget what the other components were, but they had a regular assembly line, they had a plan, and they were executing. So that was neat to see. And then we went over to West Middle, and where we got to join Pam Housefather and her sixth-grade classroom who did a poetry reading, their own work, and it was ecrastic writing. That was a new one to me, but it's good to learn new things. And it was about the, if you're familiar with the sculpture out in Chesterfield, The Awakening, the face and hands and legs coming out of the ground, that was truly inspiring to see the level of thought and the caliber of the craft of the poetry we got to hear that day. So wonderful things happening in Parkway, and I believe the publication is available, probably online, but if anybody's interested, email me, and I'll make sure you get a copy. And then I also had the privilege of attending last Friday, the PACC's holiday party hosted by Vicki Manning and her husband Rich, and absolutely wonderful evening, and certainly salute Vicki for her work as president of the organization this year, and a lot of great work has been done, and more will be accomplished before the end of the year. So thank you very much for that. All right. Anybody else? All right. 10.0 action items consent. May I have a motion and a second to approve the action items 10.01 through 10.19?
So moved.
Second.
And are there any questions or items that should be pulled to action or closed? If I could, I'd like to call attention to item 10.12, and I did have a few comments on that one. Pull that to action. Anything else? Okay. So with that, all in favor of approving items 10.01 through 10.19 less 10.12?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. And for item 10.12, I will not call any administrators to the podium, but I certainly would like to recognize the West High School Parent Association, and they have donated somewhere north of $40,000 for the new electronic marquee in front of the school. Is that correct? And I understand there were a certain amount of work done by the administration to get that approved by the city council, but the project is a go, it's fully funded, and we look forward to completion. And Jeremy, do you have a target date for completion?
I'm only a three-year old.
And then we have a second gift to acknowledge this evening, and I apologize, my computer is, only gets difficult when I'm under pressure. Maybe it's the operator. Wanted to recognize from North High, Wenrong Lee, and a $1,000 contribution which will be divided between the music and athletic departments. So again, our community never ceases to amaze me sitting in this chair, so thanks for both of those. And with that, can I have a motion and a second to approve item 10.12?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And on to reports. 12.01. Evaluation of the Early Childhood Program. Call on Jean Manning, Director of Early Childhood.
I'm sorry, it's, I'm sorry.
We can see it.
Did you see it right there? Well, I can see it, but I can't find the, I can't find the presentation. Because of the thing on the, here you go see. That's it. I apologize. I can do it. Okay, all right. It's probably not worth waiting for, it's just a short PowerPoint. Aaron changed the battery, so it's a little bit slow. Well, I'll go ahead and start and then catch up. Good evening, President Major, Vice President Jacob, members of the board, Dr. Senti and Ms. Calanda. I'm happy to be here this evening to share with you the results of the evaluation of the Early Childhood Division that began last September. Early Childhood Division serves the youngest students at Parkway, birth through five years of age, and during their most rapid period of growth and development. It also provides support to parents as their child's first and most important teacher. Our mission is the one of Parkway. We embody this mission to ensure the development of capable, curious, confident children who understand and respond to the challenges of the ever-changing world of elementary school as they leave our programs. The evaluation has been ongoing and has included many components, and I'll highlight the specifics of them this evening and then answer any questions that you may have. Further information can be found in the program evaluation. So we began our study last September, reviewing all the current research and studying further to ensure that what we were doing was in the best interest of children. We surveyed parents, kindergarten teachers, and also the faculty and staff. The parents are very aware of the program, and these results will validate what we know about, already know about our young children, I'm sorry, will validate what we already know about our program, and then it sets the stage for our future growth as we move into the next five years. The parents are very satisfied with the program, and they're extremely aware of the program, particularly in parents' teachers and developmental screening. They participate less often in preschool, but there are many, many more choices for preschool in the community. The choices of preschool, when we asked them why they chose a preschool other than Parkway, the reasons were varied, and there were really none that were really conclusive. There was no one that really stuck out about why they chose the preschool that they did. Curriculum and location were a little bit higher than the others, but really, there was no particular thing that really was at the top of the list. We also asked them if the hours that we had in our full-day program were long, if the day was long enough, and if it was an inclusive enough program. And 68% of the parents that responded really had no opinion about that. We also looked at offering full-time year-round preschool, which we may still do in the future and study it further. 50% of the people thought that that would be a good option to offer, but 49% did say they would not be really likely to use the option. Overall, the parents were very satisfied with the programs, and they would recommend it to a friend. Faculty and staff also took a survey completed, and mission, vision, and learning principles are very important to the staff. The quality of the program, they were very satisfied with. They often receive help from the secretaries, supervisors, and the district. They agreed overall that professional development lived up to each of the survey descriptions, and they were satisfied with the quality of the programs, the climate, and their jobs. Kindergarten teachers, we surveyed kindergarten teachers because we wanted to determine if the information that we send on to preschool was helpful to them, if it was useful, and were there other things that we could add that would be helpful as the children leave our programs and move to kindergarten. They really felt that we should have face-to-face conversations and transition meetings with them, so they really, so that is something that we will develop in the future. They were aware of the programs and knew that we had programs in the district, but they also reviewed the files, and they felt that the information was helpful, but they still would really like to meet it, particularly for children who have special, maybe not even special needs or have identified special needs, but maybe children who really struggle and still need help as they enter a new program. We also did a MAPS score analysis. We looked at the MAPS scores of children, current fourth graders, so they were their third grade scores, and tried to determine if there were any gains by participation in early childhood program. And of course, the results, there were significantly higher scores in children who participated in early childhood programs, particularly in Parkway parents' teachers and developmental screening. Any preschool program, well, here it is, finally. And then we additionally did a comparison of public and private schools regarding enrollment, tuition, and we really wanted to look at what was going on in the community, particularly in districts that surrounded us that were comparable to us. And we may be able to access some of their information for recruitment and some of the things that they use to make their programs go. Okay. And then last of all, the questions that you all had posed at the September meeting. We attempted to answer them, and we'd be glad to provide further information if you need it. Especially regarding scholarships. There is a change in the information that you received in the report regarding scholarships because last week we received a request from DSC that we were having our Missouri Preschool Project grants decreased. It was a significant decrease, and the difficulty with it, and of course, we know that the state is struggling with their budget, but it continues to be a concern because these are the funds that we use for our scholarships. So the children who really need preschool the most many times, you know, may not be able to access it, and it really affects our efforts to increase our enrollment in preschool. We also responded to questions about summer programs and curriculum assessment, differentiation of instruction, and transition to kindergarten. Our future plans and goals, we're using the information from, and the results from our study to determine goals, and in these four areas seem to be the needs right now. And then we will be wrapping these into our CSIP and our future plan for the next five years, which everyone will be completing in the spring. First of all, recruitment and marketing. We really need to increase enrollment in all of our programs, and we used to be the only show in town, and now there are a lot of choices out there. So people would be knocking down our doors, and we still have a considerable number of families that we serve, but we know that we need to increase enrollment in all of the programs. And we're looking at doing some regular recruitment events, some collaboration with the district communications, and refining and developing better ways to communicate the benefits of the programs to families. And then legislative events. We're working with other school districts in St. Louis County to make contacts with legislators and really stress, continuing to stress the importance of all the programs and the benefits of early childhood. Curriculum and instruction and professional development are wrapped together because as we look at the goals for each program, regarding curriculum and instruction, then our professional development is tied into those programs. For the preschool- For the preschool program, we want to continue to implement curriculum that's aligned with kindergarten, and focus on the areas of development: early literacy, math, science, social and emotional development, physical development, and health and safety. We use the Missouri Early Learning Standards, and we use those as our guide to ensure that our instruction is in alignment with the state standards. And as those standards, as the children accomplish the goals from those standards, they do flow into the SHOME standards for kindergarten. So we want to continue to make sure that we're aligned, and continue to study with other teachers and kindergarten teachers and district administrators to ensure that we're working together to make a seamless curriculum that starts at birth and then moves through into kindergarten. Parents as teachers, the program delivery model has changed this year for parents as teachers. And so it's a different service delivery. It's really focused on serving families with high needs. And so there are some additional training and information that parent educators need in order to serve the families and meet the needs of families that have children with high needs, special needs from culturally diverse backgrounds. So we're looking at just sort of tweaking the information we use and looking at what the state is giving us, and making sure that we're serving all families the correct way. Our Parent-Child Interaction Program, we want to focus on redesigning the curriculum and expanding it a bit. There are a lot of choices for families in the community to do parent-child activities, and go to Bounce U, et cetera, et cetera. So we want to look at some better ways of providing classes for families to take together in the evenings and Saturdays, and in a variety of ways, depending on what the family needs are. For developmental screening, we continue to study child development and help families gain a better understanding of screening and what it means, and ways that they can encourage their children at home, and encourage their child's development, because that's really one of the most important results of screening, is not just referrals, but also giving parents tools to use at home with their child. And developing a system of communication and collaboration with elementary teachers and administrators. We have a system now, but we would really like to refine it and revise it, and that goes along with our study for curriculum alignment. We began the effort because the preschool teachers and the early childhood administrators have been participating in the two-year kindergarten study. And that's really given us firsthand look at curriculum, and why, you know, they're changing, looking at the schedule of the day for full day, and the curriculum that's implemented. And so that gives us an opportunity to make sure that we are aligned with them. And then in technology, we really need to develop some enhanced systems for gathering data. Infinite Campus, we're moving to Infinite Campus to be a valuable tool for communication with parents. Visit Tracker is our state, the DESI program for funding for Parents as Teachers. And then, as we refine curriculum, we refine the preschool report card. And then continuing to research integration of technology in the preschool classroom. While we really believe philosophically that children need to be actively involved and really have hands-on learning, there are also new things coming out all the time, and there may be some appropriate technology in the future that we could utilize. And as I said, you know, this will be used in our five-year plan. You know, it is our hope that children will leave early childhood ready for school, feeling good about themselves, admiring and respecting teachers, and really well-prepared for kindergarten. We hope you'll come to see our programs firsthand. It's always a joy to be in classrooms and really see the magic that happens with teachers and children in the classroom. We do thank you all so much for your support. We really feel valued in the district, and we do appreciate all the support that you've given early childhood.
Okay. Mr. Jacob?
I think you'll be delighted to, and perhaps you already know this, Dr. Marty, when he comes down here, has developed a, what he calls, a 4K program.
Yeah.
And that apparently has been pretty successful, and brought kids along, not only so that they're active, but that they're learning too. So I hope you'll look into that with him too, to see if there's things that could be incorporated in there.
Oh, definitely, yeah. I had a conversation with him when we met him yesterday, and he talked about the program he had developed, so I'm excited to learn about what they did in Wisconsin.
He's really excited about those little ones. He knows that's a foundation for us. I'm wondering if, you know, when I look at our participation, it looks like it's been pretty much the same. It went down a little bit, but it's pretty much stayed around that 370, 380. Is part of it because of location, then? You know, not everybody's going to bring their kid over here to Parkway West, or...
Right. We do have programs around the district, but what we found is parents really want it to be really convenient. I know one year, Oakbrook preschool was filled, and so we offered a family-run hollow, which is really, really close. And the mother said, "No, Oakbrook's my home school, I'm only going to Oakbrook." So then she went to a private school that didn't have degree and certified teachers, so that was disappointing. But I don't know that parents are as good of consumers of school. They remember school from elementary years, not from early childhood. And I just don't think they really know what they're consuming, or what they're, you know, enrolling their children for. And that's one of the reasons why we really want to look at how we're selling the program and how we're really helping parents understand the benefits of what we do and why we do it. So, yeah.
And would Parents as Teachers be a legitimate vehicle for talking about the preschool program?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah. We already use Parents as Teachers, but we're going to look at ways to refine that, and maybe do some regular recruitment events, instead of just the things that we typically do once a year, twice a year, that we would do definite tours and really sell it through that program. The children that are in full day, the parents really want to be close to home, and they want also...or close to their work. It has to be really convenient, so that will be a challenge. We have about 26 openings right now, and then we'll also need to look, as we increase, we'll need more space, too. So hopefully, there'll be some space somewhere for us.
Anything else, Mr. Jacob?
I was just thinking that we were so impressed with the Project Parkway report that was given the other night. And one of the things that impressed me was there are state standards, which you just talked about, that are kind of a foundation, but it just sounded like everything was, we want to go well beyond that. And maybe that becomes a selling point, too, when people realize, if you go through this Parkway Early Childhood, it's not just meeting certain standards. It's we're doing everything we can to meet our mission, which is...
Right, right. Yeah, and we definitely looked toward doing that. You know, we never just want to do the minimum. We always want to do the most we can for kids.
Looking forward to going back.
Mrs. Mogulman?
Thank you for this report, and Dr. Tyson, you too, thank you, once again. This is not...this is more of a comment, I really don't have a question. Well, first, I'd like to thank all the teachers that came out. You look like you've had long days. We appreciate you being here. We know it's difficult to come out, but we do appreciate it. Mrs. Feldman and I were at, I think, the last Government Relations Committee meeting when Parents as Teachers came up, the funding for it. And I was thinking, Mr. Tandy, I know you love it when I call you. I don't even know if you heard me. Paul? Sorry. I was thinking about this survey, especially the parent survey about the Parents as Teachers program. And perhaps somehow Diana Stewart could relay that to our legislators, because that's current data about the program. And I think we need to...because a lot of them don't get it. I really don't think they understand how important it is. Especially with the kids that, you know, that need some extra services, and how it's so important to recognize them at a young age and get them started on it.
Right.
So maybe we can get that to Diana, and...okay, thank you.
We do, we are meeting with other coordinators and directors in St. Louis County. And this Region A is what they call our part of the state for Parents as Teachers. And we are planning some meetings with legislators, and individual with the ones in our district, and then doing maybe a bigger event, hopefully, in the St. Louis community. So we do work closely with other directors and coordinators of early childhood in other districts to reach as many people as you can, but that's a very good idea.
Dr. Sortino?
How will the decrease in funds affect the program?
Well, right now, I mean, it may affect the amount of scholarships that we can offer. Right now, we're using scholarship to cover the... we're using the funds and the grant to cover the scholarships. And since we had this decrease, we may not be able to offer as many next year.
So what percentage are on scholarship? Do you know right offhand?
Well, we have about, this year, I think about 41 students, and that's out of 378. So about...yeah, we used to have, you know, a hand three a year, four or five, and the last two years, it's really been...
So it's increased.
Yeah.
Well, and even though our budget next year, we expect to be the same as this year, the early childhood programs and good experience as teachers would have a very high priority. So I hope you'll make your requests to, so we can supplement the money you lose from the state.
Thank you, we appreciate that. I know the district has done a lot of supplementing for Parents as Teachers this year because of the budget cuts allowed us to continue. But yeah, that will...thank you for that. We certainly will request.
And can you remind us of the trajectory, particularly on the Parents as Teachers? I know the state made substantial cuts last year, and I think we backfilled to the tune of 500,000 or so, is that right?
I think, yeah. I'd have to go back and look at the exact amount. We made cuts in the program. We cut back on our group meetings and evening meetings. And then we...there were three parent educators that retired that we didn't rehire. So we did some cutting on our end, and then the district covered the rest, yeah.
Okay. And I think you mentioned there's more cuts on the horizon as far as the state funding. In that arena, do we have a feel for the scope of those?
Well, for the Missouri Preschool Project, that just came just recently. I don't know in the future about that yet. Actually, Governor Nixon has requested an additional $3 million for Parents as Teachers. The word that we received was that he was very appreciative of the fact that districts stepped up to the plate and covered, because many districts did, continue to have programs and cover. And so I think they're seeing the importance of it, and the importance of it to schools and to the communities. And so he has requested, now whether, how much that will, you know, mean once the budget is completed, but at least he's...we're on the radar, so that's a good thing.
Anything else?
Yeah, what other marketing tools do you use to recruit? Do you work through the schools to identify, you know, school-aged children in our elementary schools with younger siblings, and all?
Yeah, if a student, new student comes in and enrolls, they will refer, you know, refer them if they have younger siblings. We want to do more of that, and really even look at families that are currently enrolled. Usually, it tends to be new students, and do some work with the building administrators and staff in the schools. We did some advertising...we used to advertise in the Journal, but not that many people get the Journal anymore. So we've done some things in the community. But a lot of it had been word of mouth, and we just, we really need to step up our efforts. I think, you know, we used to have long waiting lists, and we don't anymore. So we need to, we have to be more active about it.
Have you used school newsletters at all?
Yeah, we have, we put, usually put a little advertisement for when preschool registration is beginning. And, you know, we try to do that every year. And then we market through Parents as Teachers. Those, that's our biggest pool of kids.
Ms. Feldman?
I have a couple things. It just occurred to me while you were talking about the ways you market, is we have this wonderful website in Parkway, and it would make a great news story, you know, approaching the time of registration, to get it out there in front of all the parents when we flash this out. But my questions were regarding your in-service. Mrs. Mogulman and I were talking about this. When you offer in-service training to your teachers, do you expand your offerings to offer it to teachers of private and parochial preschools as well? Or do we just keep that in-house?
Well, we do, we do. The professional development that, the days that we use in Parkway are just for Parkway teachers. But as a requirement of the Missouri Preschool Project Grant, we do have to use 10% of that money for professional development for private schools. And that's written into the grant. And I think the reasoning behind it was there are so many private schools, and at that time, when they started, there weren't a lot of preschools in public schools. So they wanted to reach as many people as possible. We do have some very fine private preschools, and I know many of the directors, because they came... we used to host workshops five times a year after school, and they would come in droves, because they have no money for development, and they really want development. Of course, that, you know, it's a double-edged sword, because it keeps them away from us. Some families choose it because it's their church preschool, or they're, you know, they just know somebody who, their neighbor went there. The biggest challenge is their fees are less than us, because they don't hire degree and certified teachers. So that's a, you know, that is a challenge to compete with them.
Also, when you did your map analysis, were you able to segregate the students who had attended our preschools, our programs, versus students that attended other preschool programs? And was there any difference in the achievement data?
There wasn't a difference in our preschool and the others. And I think that, you know, the development levels out, and if you're in a good program, you know, you're not going to see as much difference. We weren't really surprised by that. It was more if they're in an early childhood program. And Nathan, I don't know if you have any other information about that, that you can...
Yeah, I mean, actually, it was sort of uncanny how we shared the Parkway versus all of the preschools. You know, if an average, the max, or average, we're almost identical. So really, I mean, our, I mean, whether it's the Parkway preschool or the other preschools, just the data.
All right, and one last thing. When you talked about serving families with children of high need through Parents as Teachers, how do you determine that? If, you know, if you're starting with a blank slate, how do you zero in on the people that need your services the most?
Well, there's criteria for DESI, you know, they have to be in these criteria. You have to visit the fam...we visit the family through Parents as Teachers, and then as you get to know the family, and you look at where the child is and where the parent is, then it's determined that way. So we do have to do initial visits. That was our biggest fear with the way the program changed, because unless you can go in and really work with families, you don't know if they have high needs. You know, so luckily, we've been able to continue to do that because of the support in Parkway.
Thank you.
I would just like to tell you not to feel bad about your computer, because mine's acting up too. I feel your pain.
And mine only acted up precisely when I needed it, so I commiserate with you there. I guess, in looking through the materials, I noticed that our curriculum, the project construct, seems to be the dominant curriculum among other county districts. And then I, on the state DESI website, I noticed Project Construct, and there are three or four others that are approved curricula, whatever the plural of curriculum is. Does the actual delivery of Project Construct look very similar in all those districts? How set is the Project Construct curriculum?
The constructive, the Project Construct's based on constructivist philosophy. So it can look very different in different districts, depending on how they interpret what should happen. The basic premise is that children learn by doing. They learn by their interactions with peers and adults, and that they're actively involved with the environment. So you will see occasionally, if we visit, when we visit schools, you'll see somebody say, "Oh, we're Project Construct," and it's very structured, and children are sitting at tables and doing worksheets. And that's really not what Project Construct is about. It's based on best practice for child development, and how kids learn and what they need to learn. But there are a lot of very developmentally appropriate preschools. Creative Curriculum is one of the other ones on the DESI website. It looks very much like Project Construct. If you're using best practice, and you're really looking at what kids need and how they learn, you know, it doesn't...we like Project Construct, because it helps children become problem solvers. It helps them become part of a community, learn how to be with other children, and learn all the intellectual and social competencies, and linguistic competencies, excuse me, linguistic competencies that they need to, you know, to be ready for kindergarten, and ready for all the academics as they move into school.
Okay. And I noticed, again, the survey results, I think, were very clear as mud. Is that right, Nathan, as far as a lot of the parents? And why not Parkway was hard to determine?
Yeah, well, actually, you know, it was on a scale of how influential it was, so it was not all influential, it was, you know, it was really influential. And the top two were curriculum and location. So in terms of, you know, whether or not, I mean, all of them were sort of had a bunch together pretty close. So, in terms of, you know, kind of whether or not, I mean, all of them were sort of had a bunch together pretty close, all around moderately influential, and, and curriculum and location were slightly above moderately influential when you look at the overall results. So, if there are two areas that I would focus on, those are the two areas, curriculum and location.
Okay. And I, and I think if you got into the, the actual comments section, what seemed to stick out to me was there are certain, certain subset of the, of the parents didn't think that what they saw going on in, in our preschool classrooms met their concepts of, dare I say, rigor. But I think certainly there were, there were comments about, well, I don't, I don't want to pay top dollar to, for my child to go play, I expect him to be, and I don't, I'm not familiar with, with, with the, some of the alternatives, but is Montessori is a more rigid?
Much more structured, much more individualized, where they don't do a lot of social interactions with other children. You know, there's a, there's a philosophy, it's called early childhood amnesia, and David Elkind wrote about it, and people remember their school experiences by, you know, five, six years of age. So, what they remember about school is academics, learning to read, and so when they see children playing, because they don't have a reference, because they don't remember their early years, they don't realize all the things that happened to help the child be able to learn the academics. We try, we, we do curriculum nights for parents, and we, we do really work on educating parents about the benefits of the curriculum, and why it's important for children to, to learn in this way. But, you know, people do have their own opinions, and, and that is one of the things we want to really focus on, really, really fine tuning, you know, not just, oh, it's great, but really looking at when parents are presented information, what the children are learning, how it affects their brain, you know, why they're more prepared for kindergarten if they're, if they're in a program like this. So, yeah, we, we hope to-
Certainly strikes me as part of the, the marketing plan, and sure glad I don't have to figure out how to crack that one, but good luck.
We've always done it, but it's, it's just very hard. I mean, parents have a real, you know, sometimes they have a really definite idea about what they want, want for their child, which is, you know, learning, learning to read and write, and it's sitting at a table and writing letters. And our children learn, I mean, several of preschool children brought me Valentine's today, and they had written, "To Ms. Jean, I like you," I, you know, they, I mean, they're writing. So, I think if we can point out more the, the pre-academic things and the academic things they're doing on a regular basis, we might have a little bit more luck, so.
Okay. Well, certainly, in other, other parts of the survey, and I, having just gone through the, the curriculum, the kindergarten discussions, that's certainly fresh in, in all of our minds. And, and, and we talked a lot about the differentiation of instruction, and the social, emotional development, and the understanding that not, not all kindergartners walk in the front door on, on a, a level plane. And, and I'm certain in preschool, that's even more pronounced.
Oh, yeah, yeah, most definitely.
First off, you've got, you've got a larger age spread in the same classroom. So, I guess, and, and looking at the survey results of the kindergarten teachers, I noted that the next table demonstrates that half, fifty percent of the kindergarten teacher respondents agreed, or strongly agreed, that they had a good understanding and knowledge of the preschool curriculum. And I think of the thirty-some surveyed, there were three that, or five that strongly agree. I'm pretty sure I know one of them. It is possible to cross that divide between preschool and kindergarten in Parkway, so. And I, but I guess my question would go to, what, what do you think is, is fifty percent a number you're happy with, sitting here today?
Oh, no, no, not at all, not at all. That's why we want to develop a system for better communication and collaboration with kindergarten teachers, yeah. We want them to really understand, and, and we've had kindergarten teachers from several schools come and visit our programs. When they were looking at changing some things that they were doing in their full-day program last year, and what we hope is, is as we visit them, and they visit us, and we have conversations, that there'll be a, a really strong understanding on both sides of what happens and the benefits of each.
Okay. And, and is there, you, you've been part of the, the kindergarten study, is there a, is there a philosophical divide between preschool curriculum and kindergarten curriculum as they exist today in Parkway?
I, I would say not on our part, there isn't, you know, everybody implements it differently, and I think they're, they're looking at sort of restructuring some things in the schedule of the day. And, but the teachers that I meet with in the kindergarten study are very much on board about how children learn, and, and the importance of what we do, and, and, and very, very developmentally on board, kindergarten and preschool. I mean, the teachers are, are really in the same place, and the conversations I've had, and it's been with different groups of teachers in the last year and a half, kindergarten and preschool, they seem very much, very much in the, of the same belief of what should happen for young children.
Okay. Well, I think certainly in the, in our discussions regarding full-day kindergarten, you know, the, the issue of the curriculum, and what, what is developmentally appropriate, and, and what model is going to work in, in universal full-day is certainly exciting developments.
Oh, yeah.
And I would certainly hope that that development would occur hand in glove with the preschool curriculum.
And that, that is what you planned, right? It's a pre-K through K, when you're looking at the curriculum and the program, we'll be doing it together, right? Well, I'm sorry, did I?
No, go ahead, please.
We have a long, a lot, a long way where we could grow. Twenty percent of our kids are using our preschool program, and to me is surprisingly low. So, when we do the marketing, I, I would suggest that you do a lot of work through the, through the schools, the elementary schools somehow. When we decided we need, we wanted full-day kindergarten, we suddenly found room, you know? And I think if we're just as determined to grow our preschool program, we can also find room, I hope. Ideally, what I was surprised about in the study, I assumed is that we didn't have enough before and after programs, that was my predisposition. I still don't think we have enough, but what I learned was the location was so important. And so, the idea that somebody would drive from the north area to, to the Rural Childhood Center just-
No.
So, so we're going to need to decentralize it, and I, in my view, I wish we could do that in every single school. But I, I think if the marketing was sort of school-based, and the curriculum is developed along with a new early, kindergarten curriculum, it'll be a, be a good start.
And if we could lower the fees just a bit, I think that might help, too.
I think Keith Marty said seventy percent of the kids in his district were in the four, in the four-year-old program, wasn't it?
Correct.
So, he'll be, he'll have a, give us a lot of guidance, I'm sure, when he comes here.
And I guess the, I saw the, the survey of the kindergarten teachers and their level of familiarity with the, the preschool curriculum. Was there a, I didn't see a survey question where the, we got into the, the preschool teachers and their level of understanding of the kindergarten curriculum. Was that a survey question, and I didn't see it?
It wasn't a question, but, but I do, I feel like I can say that the preschool teachers are very aware of what happens in kindergarten. I mean, they've visited kindergarten, and they're working on this, this, you know, study, and I, I think that they, some of our teachers actually have taught kindergarten. Couple of our preschool teachers actually taught kindergarten for, one for quite a number of years, another one for a few years. So, they do, you know, they do, they are, I think they are very aware of what happens.
Okay. Well, that was all I had, anybody else? Thank you, Jean, outstanding presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry about the PowerPoint.
And thank you very much to all of your staff for sticking with us through the whole thing, and thank you for all you do for our kids. And a couple of faces in particular for what you did for Madison, thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to recognize Joy Ralphs, who's right there. Joy, why don't you stand back? She, I don't know. Joy was on the Parkway Board for seven years, and has been very involved in the early childhood programs in the area. She's been a leader in the Parents as Teachers Program, and are you still Ferguson Forest? She's a Ferguson Forest Early Childhood Coordinator, so. And her granddaughter got one of the awards tonight for, from North High School for her vocal music, so.
Well, congratulations on all fronts. All right. And Mrs. Manning, if you and your staff would like to skate out, we're going to talk budget now, and, and we wouldn't dream of inflicting that on you.
Bruce.
Wes, we love it, but that doesn't mean everybody loves it.
I, I promise you, the, my car won't affect our budget.
Is that the front or rear bumper?
Yes, exactly.
I understand Facilities has it up on their wall as a trophy.
Exactly.
Good evening, President Major, members of the Board, Dr. Centia and Ms. Calanda. I am here to give the first of two budget updates as we finish the school year, the next one being in April. And we're just going to go briefly over some of the things we've accomplished to date, and we still have some work to do, but we are going to meet our goals. And first of all, this is our budget promise, that our, for fiscal year 2011-12 is to make sure that our district expenses will not increase over ten-eleven. And we are working hard and diligent toward that promise. These, these might look familiar, these were, the next three slides are from our presentation from January twelfth, when you graciously approved tuition-free full-day kindergarten. I just want to go briefly through those, just, just to let everybody know again how that affects the budget, and what we're doing to make sure that we have expense neutral for next year. First of all, you see that because we're not getting any revenue from tuition, we will decrease our revenue by one point six million dollars. In addition to that, we're going to have sixteen teachers and eight teachers' assistants that will increase our expenses by one point one seven million dollars. So, the net change to our budget is two point seven seven million dollars. We worked really hard in December to reduce our budget, going through a lot of the different, the program budgets that we do have. We decreased the expenses for that budget by three point one million dollars. You did see these last month, you can see all of the different expenses and what we have reduced. You have the, the top ones, transportation, of course, and facilities, property and casualty, and then the other budget reductions we had from other program budgets. One of the big things that I wanted to talk about tonight is discussing the state. You were just discussing a little bit with, about PAT and preschool. As Jean had alluded to, it seems to be that the General Assembly is going away from what they call categorical, you know, revenue streams that we have, the PAT and transportation, and really looking at what is within the foundation formula. Matter of fact, you can see that the, how, that there's a current bill out there that would actually eliminate counting summer school kids, and then thus not receiving revenue for summer school. That's one of the big things that, that they're toying with. There's no guarantees that they're going to do this, but there is a bill out there that, that would actually do that. They've also put in rule, yes?
How's summer school presently funded?
Yeah, it's, there is actually a calculation that you have, it's called average daily attendance. We count the kids, and then we receive revenue. We have three revenue sources. We get, we get it from, out of the foundation formula. Sales tax is based on the ADA, and then the third piece is Vic also sends kids here, and they, for transportation, and we do receive revenue from that aspect. So, there's three sources there that actually help fund basically our, our, our summer school. The, one of the things, one of the rules that they've put in place is to allow schools to actually charge for some of the summer school pieces that you have. A lot of the, what we call enrichment is more of a, a summer camp type of, of, of feel for school. And one of the things where we would potentially like to recommend is, is considering a weekly tuition rate of sixty to seventy dollars somewhere in a neighborhood for those enrichment classes. You will see that, you know, hopefully that they don't go completely away from, you know, removing the, the, the summer school funding. One of the first things that you're hearing all the time is that the United States is, you know, going to school the least amount of any of the industrial, you know, industrialized nations. It doesn't make a lot of sense. Summer school is for credit recovery, for high schoolers that, you know, with such tight, tight credit requirements, they need the summer school to be able to get through, through school. So, it doesn't make a lot of sense to pull funding out of it. So, hopefully, there won't be a complete reduction there. But in anticipation of that, we're recommending that maybe we look at the enrichment piece of it, and those who are choosing to use that portion of our summer school program, put some sort of weekly tuition rate in there. You can see that Clayton, Ladue, and Rockwood also charge tuition already in their program, and Rockwood's recommended rates for this summer are around sixty-five to eighty-five dollars, depending on the class. Other aspects of the state, as you can see, this is part of the reason why I think the categoricals are not as big of an issue. The governor has actually put an additional seven and a half million dollars in transportation this year. As a matter of fact, that's actually grown another ten million as of Friday. It's up to seventeen and a half million. You heard three million dollars from PAT earlier. So, it, it seems like they have not, they're, you know, they really reduced it last year. It looks like they're not looking to reduce it anymore, because they, they actually, you know, heard back from the schools, not surprisingly, that, and it's, it's, you know, you can't believe they wouldn't fund transport, transporting kids to school, to and from school. So, I don't see any more reductions, at least from that aspect of it. They are still looking, as we saw at the legislative luncheon a couple of weeks ago, that they, they do need to relieve some of the burden, because there is a five hundred million dollar difference there that they need to make up. One of the things I asked at the legislative luncheon was, revenue was improving. In fact, just, I'd like to report that we received a, a report from one of my colleagues, that revenue had increased for the state by about six percent last, last month alone. So, things are looking better at the state level, and it's, that's one of the good things, and I think that's why you see some of the rhetoric backing off, because we, I think if you had talked to, to Will Rosa back in October, he was afraid that transportation funding was going to completely go away. So, things have improved markedly since that, that timeframe. Obviously, it's still early in the legislative process. This thing will change on a weekly basis, I think it always will, and I'll try to update you if there are things that adversely affect, or we think that's going to adversely affect the school district as we progress through this legislative session. Lastly, I just wanted to go through what we've been going, from a budget review standpoint. I can honestly say we've gone through one of the most extensive budget processes. We are working on it weekly, looking at each program, making sure that we hit our goals. We're, we're reviewing, any budget manager is coming in front of us that has a, a budget above two hundred thousand to discuss it and walk through their budget, to, to just make sure that they're, you know, that all the funds are being appropriately spent. And, you know, again, my promise is that our expenses will not increase, and we'll have a lot more detail at the April thirteenth board meeting as we go through this. And again, finally, I just wanted to reiterate the district's diligently working to- And again, finally, I just wanted to reiterate, the district's diligently working toward meeting our budget promise, and I'm 100% confident that we'll get there. And with that, I'll ask for discussion, questions.
Mr. Mogul.
Thank you very much. With the work of Project Parkway, I think it requires us to reexamine every program, every dollar we spend, and make sure we're spending not only efficiently our money, but then the word just left my brain, I'm sorry.
Equitably?
Equitably, and that it's being effective, that's what I'm trying to say.
Absolutely. And we put a task force together. I think that from a long-term perspective, Dr. Centi put in place the program evaluation piece of it. What we're doing right now is kind of the nuts and bolts of what we should be doing on an ongoing basis to really look at it.
That's exactly what my point is, that we really need to make an effort where we have kind of, you know, just glided along. We really need to dig in deep, and Dr. Tyson, we'll probably use you a lot more, as you know.
Well aware of that.
Keep you working. But I'm really glad we're moving in this direction. I'm thrilled, I think we all are, about the budget for next year, the projections. It couldn't come at a better time. So I really didn't have a question, I was just kind of-
And, and I'd like to report, we're really close, too. I mean, I, we've actually, there, there for a while as we were working hard, I didn't want to, to take a look at the budget for a little bit and just work on concentrating on looking at each individual program budget. Maureen has put that together in the last couple of days. We have a budget meeting tomorrow, and I think, and I think we'll be able to work through it and, and hit that promise with, with no problem at all.
That's great. Thank you.
Well, I think just to leverage off of your comments, and I think Sandy Jacob is part of the committee, and we're, we're certainly looking forward to approving changes to our budgeting policies. Is that fair to say? Certainly tying the, our budgeting process to our, our mission and vision is just about as fundamental as you can get.
Totally.
And we are absolutely not there yet, so.
Wes, do you have a sense of at what point in charging a fee for summer school do we reach that point that it's, that, you know, enrollment declines?
Oh, yeah. And that's the reason why I put the $60 or $70. I think if you, you look at it, the, the break-even point, you know, if they took 100% of the funding away, if we assume that everybody would, everybody, everybody that we had from, that went there for the enrichment program last year, we would end up breaking even at a $60 mark, $60 mark. But I think you're going to assume that there'd be some sort of reduction. What that reduction is, I, I don't know. But I can tell you anecdotally that with my kids being in that little sweet spot of going to those camps, my, my eight-year-old twins, that, that even a $60 or $70 weekly rate is very reasonable, comparatively speaking, with, with some of the, the programs out there. I know my, my son did a Bucky Dent baseball camp last, last year that was, for the week, was just, you know, $285, and it went from, you know, nine to two. So those things are, you know, so having that, I mean, those prices are very reasonable when you're looking at them from that aspect of it. So I, I, there will be some reduction, but I don't think a lot.
Ms. Felton.
I'd like to ask something.
Dr. Sortino.
You know, in terms, we all know that budgets have a certain amount of fluff, I guess, to be able to reduce-
Forsooth.
Become a more cost-effective. But do you feel that the reductions are really not having a negative impact on programs to any significant degree?
I, I feel that they're not going to have any negative impact on them whatsoever. I think we've, we're looking at it reprioritizing. Some of it is just, even if we just go back to the facilities piece of it, there, there were things that we were using, you know, that were operationally, you know, you know, used with operational funds that you usually use for your day-to-day operations, but they actually should be probably in our bond funds and done from the capital standpoint. We have more of that, we just can't do that all at once. I mean, I, one comes, like vehicles, a two-year-out type of, of situation, where those probably should be in bond funds as far as, as far as actually being in operational funds right now. But because of some of the limitations in where we are, there's, there's some things that we can, and as we have an opportunity, we'll probably move over there as well.
Will these reviews be ongoing from year to year at this point?
Absolutely. I, I really, I really like the process, I mean, that we're going through. I, I think it's been very enlightening for my colleagues at SOUP's council, too, I think. So I think it's been really good.
I'm sure there's some nervous nellies, too, but I think we just have to realize if we're doing the right thing, we're doing the right thing. We have to be confident in what we do.
What we started with, Sam, was the areas where our budget, looking backward, was higher than our actual expenditures. So those are where we started. So it's just money we really weren't spending, it was just budgeted. So when you cut that back, that doesn't really impact.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And, and like an example of our, our property and casualty insurance with music, we've, it's a consortium that we have with a bunch of, I mean, it's 500, over 500 school districts in the state. They've had favorable claims experience over the last, you know, three or four years, and prices continue to go down on that. It's really been, been a good program for the school district. And, and so when you look at it, you, we can't conceivably, I mean, when we reduce it by $250,000, you know, you have a, you're very comfortable with where that is. I mean, I don't think there's going to be any reason for it to go up.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the report, and, and it feels like progress from here, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Policy review, we have none. Call for a special meeting, none. And call for executive session from March 2nd, 2011. They have a motion and a second that the Board of Education call for exec, executive sessions on Wednesday, March 2nd, 2011, at 6:30 PM and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of actions or litigation involving the district, and any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, 610.021.1. Two, hiring, firing, discipling, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, 610.021.3. Three, preparations on behalf of the district or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups, including any discussion or work product, 610.021.9. And four, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.1.3.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Mrs. Calanda.
Mrs. Felton?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mrs. Mogul?
Yes.
Dr. Sortino?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. They have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We are adjourned.